All right ladies and gentlemen, it's 6:59, we're gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please join me in the pledge? I pledge...
The Regents of the flag of the United States of America and the Constitution of the republic stands one nation under God, indivisible, and every being just as one.
Mr. Secretary, could we have a roll call please? Yes, sir. Mrs. Issen.
Here.
Mr. Kachasik.
Here.
Dr. Cauchy.
Here.
Mr. Leonard.
Here.
Mr. Newell is absent this evening. Mr. Neiman.
Here.
Mr. Petrusi.
Here.
Mr. Stovall.
Here.
Dr. Trey.
Here.
You have a form of your present. Thank you, Mr. Secretary. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the December 3rd meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Do you have a motion by Dallas and a second by Phil, right?
Yes.
Question. Questions being called for. Did I have a question?
Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. At this time, we'll turn over to Dr. Butler with the information for the meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Trey. Our first is a student union representative, Matt Arzenti.
Hi.
Good evening, Matt.
The following activities and projects in the high school are being planned or underway. The student union is brainstorming ideas for a fundraiser in which the proceeds will go towards a terrible cause. FBLA is sponsoring a snowflake dance which will occur on February 9th. The community action program projects are underway as usual and Cap is preparing for the annual food drive. Prom information has been sent out to all juniors and seniors and the ski club is holding a ski trip at Seven Springs this winter. Thank you.
Any questions for Matt? Excellent, thank you very much. Our Students of the Month are next, the funnest part of the meeting, and we'll start with Mr. Schwartz.
Thank you, Dr. Butler.
And if we could have the Student of the Month after their names called, kinda go up to the center here and listen to all the good things that the principal has to say, that'll be a good start.
Thank you.
And face the camera.
It's my honor to introduce Jordan Haynes as Harrison Park Student of the Month for January. Come on up, Jordan. Jordan is the daughter of Jeff and Kristen Haynes and has a younger brother Jacob who's in second grade. Is Jacob back there? Can you wave, Jacob? He's second grade at Harrison Park as well. Jordan's an honor roll student at Harrison Park. Her teacher, Mr. Casper, describes Jordan as "an extremely avid reader with a drive to do well at everything she does. She's an excellent student and it's a pleasure having her in class. Her work is often used as a model for the other students in the classroom." When talking with Jordan, and I met with Jordan, the last week Jordan and I met, and we had a very nice conversation, and she seems to enjoy everything she does, but she told me that art was her favorite subject. She enjoys reading and math because they challenge her. Now, when Jordan was in second grade, she approached me and she wanted to do, organize a day for our students to show support for breast cancer awareness. And ever since second grade, so three years now, Harrison Park's been having, we turned the school pink. And that's all because of Jordan and Jordan's caring and support about her. So, I just thought that was wonderful, at that age, to approach a principal with an idea and follow through with it, something now that's an annual event, so, thank you, Jordan, for that. Outside of school, Jordan is active with Irish dancing and softball. When Jordan grows up, she'd like to be a professional dancer and perform with the River Dance Company. Jordan now dances competitively with her Irish dancing locally and across the state. And she just had a competition this weekend, and I heard she did very well, first prize. So, and that was out in Philadelphia. Congratulations, very good job. On behalf of the staff of Harrison Park, I'd like to congratulate Jordan for being the January Elementary Student of the Month.
Can't run away yet, Jordan. Can you deal with me? Being a good Gaelic class, nice lunchtime. Congratulations, Jordan, for such a wonderful job. Thank you very much. Our next Student of the Month, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Dr. Butler. Introduce Josh Taciato. Josh, you wanna come up here, please? Josh is a seventh grader at Penn Middle School. Nice to have him as our Student of the Month. Josh's parents say that he is a happy and outgoing seventh grader. He's always willing to please others and can help out whenever he can. He enjoys schoolwork and spending time with his classmates. His interests include playing the Wii, working on the computer, doing artwork, and swimming in the summertime. Talking to some of his friends at school, they say that he's a very good friend, has the best haircuts, likes to watch I Love Lucy, and is always funny and makes me laugh. Some of his teachers say that he's very independent and responsible. He pays attention to detail and works diligently. He always wants to be in the class, wants to be a classroom helper and assist the teacher in any way that he can. He asks a lot of questions and is very inquisitive about what is going on in the classroom. He's very, he gets very excited about projects that they're doing in class, and he's always eager to get started. I have to personally say, anytime I interact with Josh, I come out a much happier and well-spirited person. He always brings me up, and that is something I, I look forward to seeing him, interacting with him every day. So, I'm very proud of you, Josh. Congratulations on being the Penn Middle School January Student of the Month.
You're right there.
Okay, Josh, here's the decision.
Who has the better haircut, you or me? Congratulations, well done. Before we get to the High School Student of the Month, after the High School Student of the Month is announced, we will have a chance at the end for all three Students of the Month to get together so we can get pictures and all that. So, our High School Student of the Month, Mr. Englice.
At the High School, we have Chelseaa Poole. Chelseaa, come on up. Just give him a look, now you can turn around and look at us. Stare at the camera the whole time. Chelseaa comes from a great family. She had, she's here with her mom and dad, Chad and Stephanie Poole. She also had two brothers, Chancellor graduated 2010 and Chase graduated in 2012, both great kids. Chelseaa is involved in many activities. She's been involved in cross-country volleyball, basketball, track. She's the captain of the cross-country team in track. She was a state qualifier her sophomore year in the 800 meter. She's a president of National Honor Society, president of varsity club. She's involved in SAD and CAP. She's also representing Penn Trafford as the Westmoreland County Judge Driscoll Scholar Athlete, the female representative. We also have her nominated for the WPIL Scholar Athlete, so those are two great honors for any Penn Trafford kid to get. Last year, in 2012, she was the Chatham Sportswoman, she won that award, the Chatham Sportswoman in Sports Award, which goes to WPL Junior as a top female scholar athlete. She is among the top 5 percent of her class with a 4.26 GPA. I talked to all of her teachers and they couldn't say enough good things about her. She's just really an outstanding young lady. Chelseaa is not only very dedicated to her studies, but her maturity is very refreshing. She's naturally hardworking, an excellent writer, always eager to participate in discussion. Chelseaa is respected by everyone around her and just a kind and genuine individual. Chelseaa's the type of student who goes above and beyond expectations. She doesn't complete an assignment, she makes an extra effort to perfect it. Her ability to read deeper and analyze concepts is admirable. Chelseaa is an amazing student, but furthermore, she's an amazing person. She's a hard worker, kind, and always willing to help others in class. Her positive personality is contagious. Chelseaa is very energetic, enthusiastic student, and is always ready to learn each and every day. She shows eagerness to excel in class by leading class discussions in a very intellectual manner. She demonstrates leadership skills when she takes charge in group activities. Her passion is contagious and causes her fellow students to become excited and work harder. I can honestly say she's a wonderful kid. I've known her for four years and she's just comes from a great family and a great honor. She's, she's planning on attending Air Force Academy, so she's anxiously waiting her acceptance. So, good luck with that. Congratulations.
Chelsea, you are quite a credit to your community, to your school, to your family. It's an honor to do this. I might add, at one time, I made a mistake of running a drill, a running drill with Chelsea. I lasted 50 feet, that was it.
Thank you.
Quite an athlete. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If there's, this, do you want to give a picture? Okay, great. Why don't we get the Students of the Month over here and we'll have a picture taken of the Students of the Month, and Dr. Trey. And parents, if you wanna take pictures of all of them together, that's great, too. You're gonna do it?
I guess I'll do it.
Okay. You're gonna do it? I'm sorry. I haven't seen something like that. You're gonna do it? You're gonna do it? I didn't know I was supposed to know that. You're not even listening on the device. You're gonna do it?
I guess I'll do it.
Okay. You're gonna do it? I'm sorry. We haven't seen something like that. You're gonna do it?
She says, "Oh, I'm not."
You're gonna do it? 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 That's like gold.
I think you might be able to. Well, he's a VIP, don't you think?
No, you're not.
Parents, family, and friends of Students of the Month, if, we understand that there might be other things that you wanna do tonight, so if you pack your bags and leave, we're not gonna be insulted at all. We understand that. You're more than welcome to stay as well, but as a parent of a young family, I know that sometimes other things take, are important as well. So, thank you very much. This is the best time of the meeting for all of us, when we get to see your kids, for sure. So, thank you very much. My next informational item is school board recognition. In front of you, you have a folder from PSBA with a certificate of appreciation for being a school board member. Again, being a school board member is a volunteer position, countless hours spent, both officially and unofficially, helping the students of the district. So, I want to thank you for your time and hard work, and I know that the taxpayers in the community appreciate the work and the time that you put in. So, thank you very much. There's a lot to be proud of. My next item is school security. Now, we met Thursday, a team of staff, faculty, administration, Captain Disso, Chief Otto, state police, our ambulance people, to look at our crisis plan in light of the tragedy in Newtown. We wanted to make sure our crisis plan was up to speed and that everybody knew the plan to assure the safety of the students and the staff. And after reviewing it quickly, we asked the state police to comment on our plan, and he commented, and this is the director of a couple barracks in the area, as well as he does some terrorism work, and he applauded the district for having a very complete and thorough plan. He said that, "And just make sure you review it, revise it where necessary, and run drills." But he said, he told us that Penn Trafford is ahead of the curve here as far as our crisis plan is concerned. And that was a lot of work done in the last, about two or three years ago, with NIMS training, NSF training, there was all sorts of training. We had a drill here, two years ago, two years ago where we practiced stuff. I know the schools are practicing lockdown procedures every year as well, or partial lockdown at least. So, we're doing a lot of good things, but also, we wanna make sure that we're doing everything possible to make it a safe environment as possible. So, some suggestions the state police had, and we're signing up for some training. We really worry about the five minutes between the time of a horrific incident, by the time it starts, by the time law enforcement arrives. We are fortunate in this community that from the time a 911 call would come to the time that there's law enforcement in the building is gonna be five minutes or less, and we are very fortunate. I have lived in districts where the time would be 45 minutes to an hour and a half. So, here, we're lucky. We're talking about five minutes. And what can we do to secure the classrooms and secure our children as best as possible? So, they're gonna have some ideas. We're going to have that training, that's being lined up for this spring. Again, we're gonna revise the plan, concentrate on the acute crisis, madman with an assault rifle, those kinds of things. And of course, the state police training. I do wanna state, though, the safest place for your kids is in a public school. Although these horrific things happen, the safest place is our schools right now. But that's because we're vigilant and that's because we think about these things a lot. So, we'll continue to do that. We had a great meeting, it was, lasted a little over two hours. I know Dallas and Dr. Trey were at the meeting, and if you wanna comment on it, I just feel that, I felt very good when the state police told us our plan was good and we're ahead of the curve. We have a plan to revise, review, and practice. Dallas, you wanna add anything?
The comments that I would like to make, prior to attending that get-together, which took a couple hours and there was a whole lot of participants, I didn't know what to think exactly about the safety. I feel a whole lot better after hearing everything I did. I feel a lot more comfortable. There is room for improvement, and that improvement's on its way, but I felt a lot better, and I think that the more people know that there is that type of effort afoot, and we are being, as the outside agency said, proactive, vigilant, and the district has been doing a good job. I appreciate all that.
And for myself, I was really impressed with the intensity of the thought to protect our students. We had people who were in front of us that day who were willing to step forward and risk their lives at whatever cost to protect our young people. And that was touching in many ways. And we have a solid plan, we're developing it, we're looking at every option possible to make our buildings as safe as they possibly can be. We're cut above school systems, so we're gonna have a cut above security system also. Excellent, thank you. One item that's not on your agenda, I just wanted to mention that Dr. Trey and I sat down with Representative Dunbar last week to talk about education at the state policy level. We had a very good meeting. He says that when he goes to Harrisburg, he's just so proud of his school districts that he has in his districts, and that might not always be the case with some of the state representatives. But he just is always showing us off because of our, all of his districts, because of our performance. And just a reminder of the performance, and I remind, I remind the board of this all the time, if you go to schooldigger.com, which is probably the easiest way to look at school rankings in Pennsylvania, Penn Trafford is ranked 15th out of 553 public schools and charter schools. That puts us in the top 2 percent. And that's because of the hard work of his students, parents, staff, and the board policies has been outstanding. There's been a focus on student learning here for a long time, and that's reflected in that, and it's fun to listen to Representative Dunbar, who has children in our district, who has children that have graduated from our district, just speak really proud about Penn Trafford, and that's, you don't see that all the time. So, it was a nice conversation. We would like to have heard some better news from the governor, but that's all right, too. Finally, in April, we're gonna have State Senator Kim Ward come in and just say hello and talk to us maybe a little bit at that time about the budget process and where we are. Dr. Trey has arranged that with Senator Ward, April 2nd. So, that'll be, that'll be a time for us to question her a little bit as, as the key of budget time rolls around. So, that is all the information I have. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Dr. Butler. At this time, we'll move into recognition of visitors. We have one visitor, and Mr. Lee Schickel. Lee will probably focus the directions here, it'll be kinda like a wrestling drill. Right up here, please. You gotta state your name, address, group affiliation, if any. Your statement would be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements will be directed to me, and no participant can address or question any other board members. And I could interrupt you if your statement's too lengthy, or it's personal, or it's abusive, obscene, or irrelevant, which...
Okay. My name's Lee Schickel. Live on 1058 Bushy Run Road. Wrestling, I'm here affiliated with wrestling, but actually, any sport. Where we have small kids presently, we're not allowed to have the gym on Sundays, that's at any other schools. I'm asking if you lift that, and just because of complications of, you know, we have so many sports now that were added that there's no time for gym time, you know? And I feel that at this time, we need to lift that. And I don't know how to work it, you guys make up the rules, but if we could have something on Sundays where we can have wrestling, have basketball, kids' youth, not necessarily that have to be the high school teams, but I'd just like to, maybe you guys think about it, just to make it, I think, less complicated for all the other groups that do use the gym, maybe to help them.
Thank you. Is that it? Thank you very much, Mr. Schickel. We'll certainly take that into advisement, discuss it with Mr. Hetrick and the principals accordingly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we have no other recognition for visitors. All right, we'll continue back into the main agenda, and this contains some of the treasures reports. May I have a motion to approve the treasures report and the high school extracurricular activity fund report?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by Rich and a second by Dallas.
Question. Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. May I have a motion to approve the list of bills for the month of January 2013?
Motion. Second.
We have a motion by Rich and a second by Scott.
Question.
The question's being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried. All business?
None this evening, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Executive session, we will not be having an executive session at the previous executive session before the start of the meeting. We had, had the session to discuss personnel and legal matters. We'll now proceed into new business, athletics, and extracurricular. Madam Vice President, Mrs. Issen?
Thank you. Move to accept the following resignations. Erica Smith, Assistant Varsity Girls Softball Coach, Spring. Michael Martinelli, Junior High Head Girl Softball Coach for the Spring. Julianne Boast, Cross Country Head Coach at Trafford Middle School.
Second.
Okay, we have, I made the motion and Nick seconded.
Question.
Question's being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following athletic and extracurricular personnel. Richard Ginther, Assistant Varsity Girls Softball Coach for the Spring. Christina Woodkitch, May 2013 Keystone Test Coordinator.
Second.
I made the motion, Nick seconded.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. Budget and finance, Mr. Kachasik?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to authorize the Penn Trafford School District to enter into energies and energy savings project with Severon Energy Solutions as a joint venture for the CWCTC.
Second.
Motion by Phil, second by Nick.
Question. Rich.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
I'd just add, before you go on, Mr. President, thank you for your announcement's support. After our next information, I think it's February 4th, I'll give you the more specifics. I hope it's a 9-0, but no promises on that, and if it's not, then I hope we fill in with the Plan B, but right now, we'll just see how the outcome is in general. Thank you, Mr. President.
That is all, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Kachasik, and thank you for your comments, Mr. Petrusi. I know you've been personally fighting this battle and trying to convince any difficult colleagues in our, in our county to try to go your direction, and you haven't given up, so...
Yeah.
Hang in there and thank you.
You're welcome.
Buildings, grounds, and safety, Mr. Leonard?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make a motion to retain Masero, CM Services Limited Libability Corporation as Project Manager for the Penn Trafford High School renovation project. Compensation will be $70,000 for design and bidding phases and $20,500 per month during the construction and closeout phases.
Second.
And a motion by Dallas and a second by Phil.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Thank you, Mr. President. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Leonard. Employee relations, negotiations, transportation, Mr. Stovall?
Nothing at this time, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Stovall. Food service, Mr. Neiman?
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Neiman. Personnel and curriculum, Mr. Petrusi?
Thank you, Mr. President. Move to approve the list of additional substitute teachers to support personnel for the month of January 2013.
Second.
A motion by Nick, was that a second by Scott?
Rich.
I'm sorry, I saw him move. Second by Scott, I mean, Rich.
Question. Question.
Question being called for. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to extend the contract to Assistant Director of Financial Planning and Business Affairs from March 2013 to June 30, 2018, at annual rate of $55,000 in accordance with district payroll schedule. I'm sorry, 58. The annual contract is for 12 months and includes all fringe benefits covered by the administrative compensation plan.
Second.
A motion by Nick, second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the Penn Trafford High School band trip to Orlando, Florida from February 13th to February 17th, 2013, for the written request of Mr. David Cornelius, Band Director. Trip centers around a marching performance at the Walt Disney World Magic Kingdom. There will be no costs to the district.
Second, I second.
Yes.
Okay. A motion by Nick, second by...
Question. Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the following retirement resignation. Barbara Carrigan, Fair Professional at Trafford Middle School effective December 22, 2012. Lee Trent, chemistry biology teacher at Penn Trafford High School, effective January 2nd, 2013.
Second.
A motion by Nick, second by Rich, I think?
Dallas.
Dallas, I'm sorry. Hard time at end.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to approve the following leave request. Maria McArthur, third grade teacher at Sunrise Estates Elementary School, requesting maternity from April 30, 2013 to May 24, 2013. Jamie Shaffer, fifth grade teacher at Trafford Elementary School, requesting maternity from March 18, 2013 to March 29, 2013.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Phil.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the resignation of Mona Pope, effective December 26, 2012, under terms and conditions agreed to by the parties.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Dallas.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to employ the following personnel. New employees contingent upon the receipt of all necessary certification documentation accepted by 34151 on 14 ways in the province of Pennsylvania. Teachers. Move to employ the following temporary professional employees effective Tuesday, January 15, 2013, to teach in areas of respective certifications assigned by the administration. Employees are contingent upon the receipt of all signed contract, bill later in Friday, January 18, 2013. Jamie Buzzard, third grade at Sunrise Elementary, B2, salary $42,300. Nicholas Campero, chemistry biology at Penn Trafford High School, Level B4, $44,300. Student learning assistant effective January 15, 2013, 2012, 13th school year, salary 13,5. Sarah Oliver and Dorothy Sullivan.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Rich.
Question.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to accept the 2013-14 school calendar as recommended by the superintendent and make it part of official minutes. The 2013-14 school year will begin in an in-service date on Monday, August 19, 2013, and will officially terminate on June 30, 2014. The last day of instruction will be May 24th, May 23, 2014, unless it becomes necessary to extend the school calendar because of weather conditions, emergencies, and/or other urgent reasons.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Dallas.
Yes.
And a question was called. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the 2013-14 service employees calendar and make it part of the official minutes of the calendar, with 247 working days, 14 paid holidays, make a work year 261 days. Yearly employees will be paid for 261 days, including paid holidays.
Second.
Motion by Nick, second by Dallas.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Trucey. Policy, Public Relations, Legislative Title II. Mr. Noel is present this evening. And Mrs. Zissing, if you would, in Chicago, present the motion.
Move to elect Mr. Dallas Leonard to serve on the intermediate unit board of directors from April 6, 2013 to April 5, 2016.
Second.
Not motion by Tony, second by Nick.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. Motion carried.
Move to adopt the...
Oh, wait.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Taxes, insurance, and census, Mr. Stovall? Sorry, we jumped ahead of you.
Yeah.
Move to adopt a resolution establishing the fixed compensation as listed below for the collective tax collectors of the Penn Trafford School District for the collection of school property taxes for 2014-15, 2015-16, 2016-17, 2017-18 school years. This resolution will become part of the official minutes of this meeting. The appropriate county officials will be notified. This is for Penn Township, Trafford Borough, and Penn Borough as listed in the minutes.
Second.[1700.23]